Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Tej, good evening. Thank you. Are you a member of Aziz Nasr?
I'm a volunteer.
Thank you.
My name is Lea de Tej now Rukusin. And I'm, as I said before, a volunteer. And my husband and I are part of the Hasidic community in Barak. We recently married. And I would like to tell a very story when I left Israel 12 days ago. Okay, it's important. It's after the trauma was over. 26 years ago, I lived in a settlement called Elie. It is about an hour away from Jerusalem. Jerusalem are the hospitals surrounded by hostile Arab villages. I'm sorry. English is not bad for English.
You're doing fine.
Thank you. So I was going into labor. And we had an ambulance from the last settlement, which is Shiloh. And the danger was dangerous. The journey itself was dangerous. And with the ambulance, there were many. And this was quite a traumatic experience for me. Because I already was nervous about the journey. It was one hour. And then being tended by men, I was not Hasidic like back then. I was Orthodox. And still, I felt compelled to have women next to me because I was giving my second child birth. And now, they tried to examine me to prepare me for giving birth. And I was withholding the child. I didn't want to be birthed because I didn't want to be exposed to men. I was raised as a traditional Jewish family with Jewish values. And the modesty thing again. I was not going to compromise my values and expose my values. All testimony is also mentioned. And I know that they were trying to say, and they were talking about...
Ms. Tej, let me listen, please, for a moment. Mr. Reiser. Yes, Mr. Reiser.
I would ask you to limit the testimony to that which is within the four corners of the application. And most notably, to occurrences involving the local...
Just give me a second.
...the need as present or not present in this country. My understanding of this testimony is it's about an incident in Israel several years ago. And I'm having trouble seeing the relevance as to how it goes to need.
Alright, so I'm...
Hearing Officer, nice to meet you. It goes to the issue of modesty. It doesn't matter if that was either or somewhere else.
It's not even about modesty. It's about the emotional trauma. Because I had surgery 20 years after this. Because I was retaining the child. I didn't want to give birth because I didn't want to expose my body. So my birth canal, and I'm sorry to say this here in front of an audience, but I think it's important. My birth canal completely tore. I went like this in life, not knowing what happened to my body. I was not prepared. I had repaired surgery 20 years after. So I went to the trauma twice. And I was not the same issue back then. I was only a modern Orthodox. I'm staying. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Our last witness, David Fryer.
Good evening, Hearing Officer and members of the Amos Committee. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Let me tell you, initially, I did not want my wife to do this. I was worried that I would get pressure in the community, which I did. I had no time to deal with. But once I got involved, I could not turn back. It all started when my wife Rookie got a call in the summer of 2011. Asking to free legal help from a group of Hasidic women who were EMTs and doulas. And were not allowed to join Ha'atzala. My wife was not sure about this group and discussed their request with me. At first, she thought this may be a group of troublemakers. And said to me that she was going to do some research. Including interviewing women who experienced trauma, who treated by all men, EMTs. We heard that a new square, a Hasidic community in Rav Katan, whose rabbi has thousands of followers around the world. Including a large following in Barak. Opened a women's division in the local square in Square. I've heard about it. I went with Rookie to the rabbi of Square. And he explained to us how important it is to have a division of women, EMTs, in Azzal. He emphasized that women of this town came to him crying over the shame and trauma of having the babies delivered in the ambulance by men of their community. He further explained how he was going to expand the responsibilities of women, EMTs, to handle all female-related emergencies, not just children. He encouraged us to go get involved in this issue. Although the square leader was very determined, I was still not convinced that Rookie and I should get involved. So on my next trip to Israel, I make every trip, travel twice here. I decided to meet with Supreme leading rabbis of the Jewish world. See the two photos in the application on page five. And the handwritten letters of endorsements in Hebrew transl... If you go to page five, two pictures. One of them is not live ready. And I didn't put all, I had a collection of 20 rabbis, but I didn't want to... And the handwritten letters of endorsement in Hebrew translated into English on page 131 to 137. And just by the way, let's tell you that these rabbis that I went are the biggest. Like Supreme Court, these are the biggest, biggest around. What are we talking about? The one that I went to, his father-in-law's name was Eli Ash, and the letter was the biggest they had even of. It was not well. They bought him for $100,000. The doctor had to fly down to fly to Turkey, they were trying to die by 100 years old. Just saying that, these are not just rabbis. To our surprise, the leading rabbis of Israel were even more determined that Rookie and I get involved in this mission. In fact, in Israel today, the United Soul of Israel, under the leadership of Eli Beer, has opened a division for religious women. I find it surprising that all the rabbis who signed the letter opposing Aziz Nasr, as mentioned before, which was submitted by the opposition, not even one of them reached out to me to hear outside. Which is a fundamental requirement under Jewish law. In fact, a few red rabbis approached me, saying that they were asked to sign the letter, they give a delegation going around to everyone. But refused to do so before talking to me. One rabbi, I met this person by industry. One rabbi told me, he refused to sign because he supports us. But due to the political climate, he's not ready to expose publicly. And I'm sure that's not one, I can tell you maybe 20 like that. By the way, he mentioned his 48 signatures. Do you know how many rabbis there are in Barak? Like 150 to 200 in total. He got 400, 48 signatures. Okay, because my wife is careful with following hip and the laws. I don't know about Aziz Nasr's goals. Aziz Nasr's goals, I don't know. But let me tell you what I do know. The countless of men come over to me in the city or in the street thanking me for Aziz Nasr. Helping my wife, helping their wife, daughter, or their elderly mother. This is happening every day. I also know of the cases which unfolded in my presence when I was with Rookie together. I'll give you just one example, it's late. I wish you would give more time, more people have been here. I'll give you one example of many cases without identifying details, like I said, can't say. Of what happened on a summer showers, the weekend, afternoon in our bungalow. I'm not going to mistake. Some children came banging, this was afternoon, banging on the door urging my wife to come help. A young woman had an emergency in the neighborhood bungalow. The parents panicked and called the local Ha'atzala. But the other children thought of calling Rookie. My wife ran over to assist the young woman. And while doing so, Azzal arrived. By that time, a crowd had formed in front of the bungalow. I was there with my friends and neighbors. The young woman was inside with Rookie. When the male EMTs arrived and entered the bedroom, from outside, we all heard a shrieking. She sounded traumatized. We heard the parents ask Azzal members to give Rookie some time to see if she could resolve the issue. Just not give her few minutes. The EMTs were encouraging their parents to allow them to transport their daughter to the local hospital to be sedated. We all watched the male EMTs wait outside the bungalow. And minutes later, the young woman walked out smiling and leaving. It's not a made-up story. We all rejoiced and talked about what a difference it can make when women treat women during emergencies. We now, we know that there are Jewish laws, we will finish it up. We know there are Jewish laws relating to physical conflict between men and women. We also know there are exceptions to the law in terms of life-threatening emergencies that everyone spoke tonight. However, what you may not know is the culture of modesty and how it's promoted and manifests itself in the Hasidic community. The countless of religious books and protocols that teach women and girls to avoid male doctors and male medical professionals unless there's a life-threatening emergency. Therefore, many women delay calling for help. Because they are in doubt whether or not they are having true life-threatening emergencies or this alone is life-threatening. Thank you all for your courtesy and generosity. Allow me to explain how an ambulance license for Aziz Nasr will meet the needs of the religious community of Barak. Which includes keeping patients calm as well as helping women. Women who are uncertain, this is very important now. Women who are under any circumstance, regardless of the rabbinical exception to the modesty rule, will not call and make an EMT. That's fair enough, a lot of them. Secondly, women who follow the rabbinical exception to modesty rule during life-threatening emergencies and wait, the problems they wait until the condition escalates to a life-threatening emergencies before calling for help. Thirdly, I want to finish the end of the talk. Thirdly, women who follow the rabbinical exception to modesty rule during... Stories my...
I'm going to ask the gentleman to be respectful. I think we've been respectful up until this point. And to...
When the rabbis fall for it, they did the same.
So I'm going to ask. So I'm going to accept what is being said as opinion and will take it as opinion. I'm not taking it as fact. I am going to insist on civility here. And I understand passion is present, but I think civility must remain here as well.
Correct. Sorry.
Go ahead, sir. And you'll be finishing soon.
But you know, I wanted to... So he mentioned one and two. And the third thing is, women who follow the rabbinical exception to modesty rule during life-threatening emergencies, but lack the knowledge and training to make such a determination. So they don't call for help. They don't know what's yet, what's likely. I hope and pray that the respected members of the Amos Committee recognize the fact that so many women with unmet needs and pre-hospital emergency who until now had no voice and have waited for this very day and turned to you for help. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any questions?
One line, one line of questions. I'm not going to pronounce one question. A lawyer never listens up to that.
Ask me?
Yes, just very briefly.
Big lawyer, listen.
You mentioned earlier in your testimony that you and your wife wanted to speak with a rabbi about the founding principle of Aziz Nasr.
Yes, correct.
Where was that rabbi?
Okay, let me explain. The rabbi is not in Barak. He's in Square. Know where Square is? Exit 11 on Palisades. But he saw I wrote, where are all his followers? He has thousands in there and he has, which probably a thousand in Barak alone. He's a rabbi that people wait, coming from all over, waiting. Like I could say, you come to every night, he would have 100 people waiting to discuss with him. He'll have from England, Israel coming because he's a very smart man. And he opened, if he opened in his place and he was begging us how important it is to have this. I would not even think about this. Every time he came to visit him, he asked my wife, so what are you holding? What are you up to? It was shocking to see this. Now, you're saying about that, is there other rabbis in Barak that I have? But let me understand, I do not publicize those rabbis. Because there's no reason for this. You wouldn't have to say it, but now it's...
That's quite all right. You answered my question. My question was simply whether he was local to Barak. You answered it.
I asked that, you have published it.
Ms. Reiser, I'm just, I'm going to reinforce what you're saying. So, Ms. Reiser, when the question is asked, I'm going to politely and with respect ask you to answer only the question. And don't take it as a diving board to go swimming a few laps in the pool. And just focus on the question.
And what I hope is my last question is, did that rabbi reach out to Ha'atzala about their position on Aziz Nasr before giving you his advice?
No, he did not reach out.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the committee?
Want to go home?
All in favor?
Strike that from the rest.
I didn't hear anything.
Any questions?
Okay, Rabbi, we thank you for your time and our patience.
There are a couple of young women over there.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levins. Mr. Fryer, sorry. Who's, any...
I believe we're two for one. And we have a new wife present. I would ask that to...
I just want to say this one thing. Because everyone has asked this question and mentioned about Barak rabbis. There are a lot of rabbis that withdrew because if you want to hear, I'll let them hear. That they threatened me, so they had no choice, they had to back out. This is going on for the last few years.
Okay, well, I... Thank you for your time. And you said you have another witness who is...
Man, can you remember your name? Dvorkas, please.
Okay, Sarah Dvorkas. And it looks like you're a nurse, Mrs. Dvorkas?
Midwife.
Midwife. It says R and C and M. What is C and M?
Certified Nurse Midwife.
Certified Nurse.
Had been a nurse before, but didn't...
And the lady who's standing on your left?
Dr. Melinda Mann, we both...
Okay. And Doctor, so we have Doctor, Ms. Dvorkas?
I'm not on speakers.
Yeah, could you just, could you spell your...
I'm on phone.
I'm fine. Could you just say your name and spell it for us so we have it for the record? Yes, Doctor?
Melinda Mann.
M A N N or M A N?
F A S L M.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Dvorkas. I'm a certified nurse midwife. This is Doctor Melinda Mann. We both, each of us...
Doctor Dvorkas, you're going to forgive me for interrupting. I do not mean to be rude. Doctor Mann, you are a M D, D O. What is your doctrine?
I'm a certified physician in obstetrics and gynecology.
Okay, so you're the real deal.
So is Mrs. Dvorkas.
And I don't mean to diminish this Dvorkas either.
Each of us both, myself and Doctor Melinda Mann, each given more than 25 years in the Males Hospital doing the sole work of obstetrics and gynecology. I myself do over 300 deliveries a year, which means we do no home births. Doctor Mann is part of the group, so I'm sure she does 150 a year. Which puts me into the hospital more than 350 days of that year, which means that we still want. This is no hearsay, whatever the facts back, there's no drama coming in. I'm not going to become over passionate. I'm not going to over dramatize anything. Whatever I have is recorded in my personal statistics, available to anybody. Because we keep a log sheet of every single delivery. No matter who does it, where it's done, as far as my own patients are concerned. A little over 100 deliveries a year. It comes out that somebody's been born with grand malts, so I have large babies, many babies, who deliver very quickly, do need help. Not all of them can deliver in the hospital. They just don't make it, even two blocks away. So statistically speaking, with my personal practice, I have about 1% of deliveries done by Hazzala. Which means three to four a year approximately. Because I'm a sewing practitioner, I know these patients from their first baby to their 12th baby. I know that they wanted their conception to obtain their delivery pretty intimately and probably every detail of their five lives, five lives or medical lives. Hazzala gives me many, many transports also, not just deliveries. And the reason that I have many transports and not deliveries is because of their response time. Their response time has absolutely been marked. Every patient that's delivered or transported by Hazzala, I go over and I ask them how to go. Were they proper? Were they modest? Were they being fine? Were you traumatized? I haven't put anybody, as far as delivery or transport, given the word emotional rape. I was trying to attract you to that word. Anyone who's having a baby is emotional, entrusted, it's a traumatizing experience in your own doctor's hands. But thank God we have someone who's there to do what they had to do. In short, I think both Doctor Mann and I both agree that Hazzala is a three-word slogan for the well-oiled machine. Number one, let me tell you something. Patient that's about to deliver does not want Hazzala, trust me. They don't want a man, they don't want anyone. They also don't want female EMT either. They want their own doctor. They want no one touching them, anywhere. What they do want to do, they want to be transported, period. The second choice is, if the baby's coming, we have one choice, then Hazzala is there. But the first choice is not to have Hazzala deliver them. Timing, their timing is absolutely unbelievable. Which is the reason why so many patients aren't transported before they are delivered. I know when I was traveling, getting my children to school, probably reporting them to 15th Avenue in the rush hour, on a holiday, or the eve of a holiday in our community. The traffic, the shopping, the school buses, the cars, the people. It takes almost 20 minutes to go three blocks. I'm talking from personal experience. And I said, I asked Hazzala point blank, how on earth do you get these patients into my labor room so quickly? And the answer was, we have seven ambulances in seven strategic spots all across Barak. Response time from phone call to delivering to my hands. It's not that I deliver them in the home way, but they come to me, I get them. It's less than, it's about two minutes. The skill and expertise, but most of all, it's the experience that they have. 50 years of experience. It's not the education, it's not the qualifications, it's not the patience, it's not their hand-holding, it's not their training. It's their experience of doing it. I myself would not want to have a doctor who just graduated medical school do a heart transplant on me. I want 50 years of expertise behind that. If you're going to save my life, give me your expertise, please. Give me your best. Even a cashier in a community like Barak, we're congestive, we're dense, we're intense, very intense. But even a cashier, they mostly store these expertises. Because the lines are from here all the way down to the kazoo. Number two, we have a big advantage with Hazzala guys, they have muscles. A patient is delivering in a bathtub, and I was in the hospital when she was delivering. She was brought in by Hazzala. And I heard she delivered in a bathtub for whatever the reason was. Two men came in, she was covered, she was in her bathroom. Lifted her out, put her on a stretcher, and off we went. We need the muscles, and that's something we can't, we can't call for someone else to come to bring them while she has a placenta inside and bleeding at the same time. With that, with lifting up, taking her on the stretcher, and taking her to the bathtub, then off we go. This was traumatizing, but you know something? We survived, we survived, we're split. Like bears for Holocaust survivors, they survived that. Having delivered you, I can't see it as emotional rape or traumatizing experience that would actually exaggerate and make a mountain, literally a molehill. They were there, they did their job, they delivered you, they went home, endless ends. I can't write a book about that. It was done. Why are you suffering 30 years later for this with all kinds of trauma? I really don't understand it. There's nobody that can either mean, this is one of the ladies that spoke here made a comment about, you can't pull response time from when you make the phone call to when they're delivering in the hospital. It doesn't count. You have to count the hours before you have... Who in labor, this baby comes waiting hours? And if it's only 20 minutes, of course, Hazzala takes five minutes to come and five minutes to get to the hospital. And Hazzala, these are two-minute call. So they have a choice. I can't see anything replacing what you're doing. I have a great respect for them. I have a great respect for Aziz Nasr and what they're trying to accomplish, I really do. I did unfortunately have a couple of experiences for them, who were my patients. And I didn't want to air any dirty laundry, but since unfortunately, some of your people said things about Hazzala, and I want to stay totally private, neutral. One of my patients was hemorrhaging at home, and I'm glad to see her. She was living out the corner from me. An EMT arrived, and I said, we need to transport this lady. And the response was, okay, I'll get transported. Five minutes later, which is not Hazzala's response time, nobody was there. And she literally poured, not bleeding, poured. I said, who did you call? My ambulance. Who did you call? My ambulance. And the story was, I went over, took a phone call, called Hazzala. The men came up and they said to me, is she stable? I said, no, but she needs to be transported. Totally respect for me, without having to assess and take in blood pressure. They assumed if I need to transport it, she's got to be transported. Got on the stretcher, covered her, bounced her into the ambulance. And she was already out of way with other ambulance arrived from, I'm not even aware. And when I got to the hospital, because I went by foot, I said, just get her there, I'll be there soon. She was in the emergency room, and we had ordered ready blood to be transfused into her. I went to look at the bag of blood, it was all negative. All negative, it's given, only, had no time to cross match the patient's blood. Had she not been there five minutes later, I would have been minus one patient. I just delivered her a baby about three months ago. So she apparently survived enough to get pregnant, have another child in our community. In fact, the man had a story that she just told me today, which is, that she can tell you, about emergency that she had. Hazzala was transporting a patient with severe plegamia. They, the doctors had made a decision, told Hazzala, bring her to the labor floor. We didn't see that patient. Hazzala did. But the expertise that they have, the experience that they have, told them, no labor floor, emergency room. And then the doctor, the man, heard that she was going there, took a bag with her knives and all her equipment, and went to death.
Mrs. Ash, I...
Before we go, can I...
This is the last...
All right, so...
Let me just, I need to make a comment because this...
I'm going to let Doctor Mann speak and then you can add either a question.
Thank you. Specific goal of determining if Aziz Nasr is, or should be, having an ambulance for transporting patients. Having, as a physician, I brought on the bus. We don't even call an ambulance, we call it the bus. I've ridden on many bus rides to the hospital. It's an incredible responsibility, requiring a very high degree of skill. And the way that Hazzala acquires this skill is by mentoring, by riding along with their less experience, and by having a tremendous volume, and seeing a vast array of all types of problems, some of which are exceedingly rare. And it is the rare problems that can also be the most life-threatening. So if Aziz Nasr is interested in this, they have to demonstrate competency in piku ach netish. We didn't use the word piku ach netish tonight. I'm speaking to women here. And with respect to Rabbi Fira, he mentioned many times about how people complimented Aziz Nasr about all the help that they gave, but he didn't use the word save. We're here to save lives. If Aziz Nasr can demonstrate that they can save lives by doing what Hazzala has been doing for so long, I'm willing to listen to it. But right now, I don't see it. And I'm a physician in the community. We have an aging population, mortally obese, multiple comorbidities, seizures, strokes, hemorrhages, heart attacks in our pregnant patients. And we have to be prepared to save those lives. Please tell me that you can do it, and then I'm willing to listen. The story of this Hazzala diversion is the one that Mrs. Dvorkas is talking about. I was the attending on labor and delivery on Godofolker Hazzala. And I'm bringing in a critically ill patient, Dr. Brown, who had plegamia. And they made an independent decision to divert her to the emergency room because she was so ill. I figured out that they weren't coming to the labor room. And I ran down with my team, including a tower, to do an emergency C-section. In walked a woman in fulminant pulmonary edema, excuse me, not walk, she was almost unconscious. They rolled her in. She was becoming unconscious. And in another five minutes, she was unconscious. And Hazzala brought her in. She needed to be intubated. She was uptoned, she didn't even know what was happening to her. And she had an emergency C-section right there in the ER. She didn't feel anything, she was adamant. These are the types of patients that we need to save. Pardon me? Oh, I debriefed with the ER director after this because I was concerned that Hazzala had taken into their own responsibility to divert. Because I was ready in the labor room for this patient. I had my anesthesia, I had everything ready. And the ER doctor felt that Hazzala had made the... And the ER doctor felt that Hazzal had made the correct decision.